There's Mr. O'Keefe.
I turned on that audible notification, Stephen. It felt like it probably just is a little bit safer. A felony through the wiretapping statute in this state.
Here. So let's go ahead and call the meeting to order at 8:16. Thanks all for coming after another great SEU board meeting. Without further ado, Adam, I will pop it over to you for anything that you have to report on.
Thank you. Just a couple of items from my superintendent's report that are very germane to Mom Vernon. So first, we had a couple of issues from last month that you guys wanted us to report back on. First roofing issues above the sixth grade wing and maintenance. Unique projects that custodians could be during during this downtime that don't cost any money or, you know, nominal fees. Any hit list for facilities projects for the summer and then our summer plan for staff professional development. So I'm going to ask Michelle to speak to those first three and Christine for the last one. So Michelle, Michelle and then Christine, thank you.
We do have somebody going out to give us a quote on the roof and looking at the repair. They have not completed that process yet, but we'll have a better sense of that. I think it was primarily shingles that needed to be replaced. And we do have on the roof replacement plan projection to have the roof completely replaced in FY '21 on the warrant. So I'm sorry, on the ballot in in calendar year '21. So that was the the roof piece. Custodians, they are working on the room cleaning and, you know, all of that with teachers coming in and clearing out their rooms. So they've been keeping busy with that. We are disinfecting the rooms as people go in and out of them and staying on top of that as well. As we complete that process, you know, we'll look at two other things that we can have them stay on top of, you know, such as outside work to to kind of spruce up the external part of the facility. And looking at painting that has been addressed inside as well. So some of those things are underway. So that was two of the three. And the last of the three was, what was the last one, Adam? Is it year end projects?
Hit list for summer projects for the custodians as well as tasks they can do over the summer.
Okay, so we just talked about that one in the roof.
Yep.
I thought that there was one more with respect to year end. Facility project.
Summer projects, so things they're going to be doing over the summer. So any hit lists that they might have.
The only thing that I had in terms of the larger scale projects, which I know that the board had not entertained, but I do want to just mention to folks that on our initial budget presentation for the upcoming year FY '21, there was an item listed on there for the retaining wall. And that's not in next year's budget. So I just want to make sure that folks were aware of that. And it's not been contemplated out of this year as well. Just bring that to your attention.
We did find out while we're touching on that quickly, I did find out that there may be some trust fund money available for that project. I'm not sure how much that project cost, but I think it was just under $2,000 that might be available. So as that's getting sussed out a little bit, Michelle, I can get you the information on that.
We had ballparked, it was a real rough estimate, but ballparked 20,000 for the for that mark.
Okay. Thank you. And quickly, while we were talking about roof replacement, are we starting to get quotes for the roof replacement since that's coming up in 2021? No, you're shaking your head out.
Oh, we're happy riding it out for now. We're not having active leaks on a regular basis. We do have a community police officer who checks it regularly and reports back on a monthly basis. And so we we feel like we're hanging in. So we're not looking right now to replace it. So it's where we want to be is we want to have the money set aside and have it for when we need to pull the trigger.
Okay, thank you. I'm happy to jump in if Michelle, you're done and speak to the last point.
I'm all set.
Perfect. So we have a variety of professional development planned for this summer for teachers. All of it, we're planning to do either in person or remote or hybrid. So we're looking at how we would be able to accommodate either part, you know, making sure teachers are comfortable, but still giving any teacher that might be comfortable the option of participating remotely. So one thing which I had mentioned already is the fifth and sixth will be working with their AMS counterparts on making sure that their assessment maps are up to date, looking at their assessments to ensure that they reach that level four, that they have rigor and opportunity for students to do that. And we're also just going to revisit our competencies as well to make sure that after, you know, fifth and sixth grade, they started the grading work a year ahead. So fifth and sixth grade teachers, they're finishing their second year for most of them unless they piloted the year before that of using Empower. And our fifth and sixth grade teachers were able to continue to use Empower throughout remote learning. They felt pretty comfortable. Our K4 teachers found that often the work was not was maybe the parent's work and the child's work, which is pretty typical in the lower grade levels because parents are providing support for students. And in fifth and sixth grade, students were a little bit more independent. So they felt that it was a pretty accurate representation of where students were. So our fifth and sixth grade teachers continue to use Empower. So they'll be able to provide some good solid feedback on their standards and their competencies. And if any adjustments need to be made there, so those would be two half days that fifth and sixth grade teachers would be participating with their and we do have for all of this professional development, we do have Title II grant funds for this. The other piece is a literacy institute that we're holding, we're bringing in Teachers College Reading Writing Project. They're going to have to be remote. We actually were able to bring them onsite back in I think it was February or or so for some training for our K2 teachers. We're holding that training again for K2 teachers and then also providing a training for three through five teachers. So they're welcome to attend that training and then we'll have one training day and then one work session day. So it would be two days for teachers. And then the last piece is our new teacher institute, which we started last year, which was really successful. We found that we have so much curriculum instruction and assessment work that our new teachers really need to be able to understand, to hit the ground running. That we designed a new teacher institute last summer. So in addition to our SEU orientation day, we have three full days for new teachers. Two are for curriculum instruction and assessment work. And then one day is for the mentor program. And that was really helpful because teachers not only had time to be part of the mentor program and get to know all new teachers, you know, and mentors in the morning together, then they then have the full afternoon just to work with their mentor to go through their their beginning teacher checklist with them. So that was a really successful model. We got great feedback last year. So we're planning on continuing with that model this year. And again, able to access grant funds for all of those days, including that new teacher institute, both for mentors and mentees. Title II actually encourages the use of of those funds for mentoring and induction. So that's a pretty critical piece. Great. Thank you. Adam, was there anything else that you wanted to add?
That's everything from my end. Everything else we took care of at the SEU.
Okay, great. Thank you. Do any board members have any questions for Adam, Christine or Michelle at this point? Pete?
I just for Michelle, I guess, and maybe we covered this at the last meeting, but what is our unreserved balance that we have? Did we make a commitment on that? Is that something that we use for the retaining wall? Is that a good spend? I just was curious about that.
So the last month end report in in May was was done at the beginning of the May month of May, the unreserved fund balance available was 27,900 at that time. We've not had a significant change in that. That's when you take the unexpended appropriations back out the 50,000 that needs to go to funding the capital reserve. And then we had projected 84,000 to go toward offsetting the tax rate. So when you take those things into consideration, that would leave 27,000 and almost 20,000 of that. So my understanding is at the last meeting, there was a decision by the board not to utilize that unreserved fund balance and to return that in the template setting process.
And and my other comment regarding the roof would be as we, and I agree with holding off as long as we can. But I think we need to pursue solar. At least have an investigation or a presentation and full disclosure, I have a acquaintance of my family, my daughter-in-law's brother runs a solar company that they do a lot of work for municipal buildings, schools and public entities. It's really not residential. And I think it would be wise of us to explore our options for solar. So if we're going to do the roof, maybe we do solar at the same time and we can save some money in the short and the long term. So I would, I would be interested in setting that presentation up. But again, I would abstain for any votes or anything like that because of that connection that I have. So just throw that out.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. Anyone else have anything that they want to discuss? Steve?
So just on the solar thing, not in an effort to add to the solar conversation, but have we seen a significant drop in our power bill usage?
There has been a drop in the bill. I don't have numbers to provide to you this evening, but I know that when the work was done and we had initially, we had had some issues with not receiving the full amount of the reduction that we had anticipated. And they came in and did an assessment and determined that there were some lights that were on that had not been initially planned to be on and things of that nature. But since that time and the tweaking of that process, we had experienced a reduction at that time in in our utility usage.
Because I would hope that it would be a significant reduction because the building is basically not being used for three months. And then if there wasn't, that tells us that the problem is something else. So.
I'm happy to gather information if you would like.
I also would be really interested in hearing that because you would think that with the building not being in use, that the bill would be dropping or would have dropped significantly. So that's a great point, Stephen. Thank you.
Cool.
Any other questions for Michelle or Christine or Adam before we? No, okay, thank you.
I do have one quick thing, and I apologize, and I want to burp later, Billy, the point with when it comes to the grading software. From a committee standpoint, Christine, as a parent going through three different types of programs in a matter of three years is extremely frustrating. So Empower was sold to us as board members as being the be all end all. And I remember being at the meeting where we voted to approve it and taking a look at the cost and associated with it. And now, three years later, we're throwing it, or I'm not saying we are, but potentially throwing it out and then moving to something else as a parent and as a board member, that could be a little frustrating. So I hope the committee is also looking at ways to leverage the current software to do what we wanted to do in the most efficient way without us trying to retrain the community and and all of us on on a new program to to give us the same type of content.
And I have been working with Empower to try to alleviate some of those pain points. You know, for teachers as they continue to use it, we just have to look at whether it's enough for it to be the best software. I do not see any members of the public. Adam, do we have any?
Let me double check. 10 participants, no members of the public.
Okay, so I will declare public time number one. Did you have something that you wanted to add?
I just another question, if I could. I know that during John's report in the previous meeting was about kindergarten enrollment at 26, probably 27. Are there opportunities this year for more students from Amherst to come up the hill and participate in our school? Is that something that's been not explored, but has there been any interest, I guess, from any of the Amherst Village students? I mean, it's a pretty good financial situation for us in terms of getting tuition monies back. So I just was wondering if there's been any movement in the number of families slash students that were interested in participating in our school.
Well, right now, we're locked at those three families. John, are those three families planning on going to second grade with us next year?
That is correct. At this point, nobody's communicated the opposite for me. Out of the three families, they each have a younger sibling. And two of those siblings are set for kindergarten next year. So we will have in effect five students from three families next year.
Great.
Thank you.
And is the Amherst Board still open to this agreement?
As far as I know, but it begs the question, we probably need to double check with them on Thursday night, Michelle. So we'll verify with them. I believe so. They were last year. And we talked through the whole contingency of what it meant for younger siblings and all of that. So we'll verify this Thursday and I'll make a note of that, Michelle. I keep saying Michelle because there's money involved and I just, it's like, I just want to keep saying Michelle whenever there's money involved.
Well, I would hope that 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 agreement would stick, considering that we told those families that they were going to be afforded that opportunity. So I really hope that would be okay.
Yeah, I kind of considered it a done deal in my mind, but.
I would agree that those families also considered it a done deal. I found out on the Fourth of July celebrations in Amherst, I bumped into one of the families there and they shared with me that the Amherst Board had just approved it for the siblings to go. So I don't think anybody's questioning that it would not continue.
Okay.
Perfect segue. Mr. Shattonjar, do you have anything that you would like to add? It's your time, principal's report, even though we already did it, but.
We did, yes. I would just add that I think everything's been running pretty smoothly with the conditions and situations that we've been running through since March 17. It's it's been a, you know, hate to say unprecedented one more time, but it's been a very different ending to a very different school year that no one has really, I think, fully enjoyed, but everybody has participated in and given more than 100% to, which is not surprising from this little school and this community or the staff. Kids were, you know, making some adequate noise on Friday during the talent show in the chat session section of Zoom, cheering on their peers and just knowing that that school and community spirit is still there, which was very exciting and very fun to watch. But I think overall, the staff have done an amazing job. They're not finished as they continue to wrap up the next couple of days with with final report cards for students. We are meeting, getting our final kind of pieces in or the more pieces into our placement process, which we, I'm already going to hand off to Kim Sarfey to continue on with the staff. So they're all set for August to share with the families. We've had a few families already consider or start talking to us about that they're moving into town. So we have already some enrollment increases. That's why I say we're probably still, we're still easily, I would say at this point, over 200 students for next year. And still with good numbers in every grade level, just about in the high twenties, if not just teetering on 30 or just over 30. Your fifth grade moves up to 30, continues with 33. No, and I just, I guess I would continue to echo the appreciation and sentiments in the last meeting that it's just been an incredible adventure that I've enjoyed every minute of with the students and staff and families and the school board, which I don't think many administrators can say they enjoyed their school board. So I will publicly say that I've enjoyed my school board over the past six years. It's been a great ride and a great adventure, and I look forward to continuing the relationship and the connection with all of you and with the town as I welcome your seventh graders down to Amherst Middle School. It's gonna be a different adventure, but nonetheless, exciting and fun. So thank you for allowing me to be the principal of the Montverneville School for six years.
We really appreciate you, John. In case you didn't feel like warm fuzzy, like we really appreciate you. You've done great things and the town just adores you and the kids adore you and the parents adore you. So know that you're going to be missed very deeply, but everyone's so glad that you're going to be in that position, you know, down in our in our neighboring community and being able to welcome the kids there and that we'll be able to see your your face on meetings and just know you're around. So we're really thankful for that. So thank you for the efforts that you've put in here. You've made a real big difference.
I'm also, I'm also excited about, and I've shared, I think, with a couple of you, but publicly also, just to let you know that Dr. Kim Sarfey and I have been already in communication. We spent several hours already on the phone over several days. We've text, we've emailed. So there's lots of great beginnings to our connection. And I hope what continues to foster a great transition into the next school year with Dr. Sarfey. So very excited for her and very excited for the school to to come under kind of her leadership. It should be really a fun time. So I'm looking forward to that transition.
Need to do an elf on the shelf cameo. Come back.
Not on the roof.
Yes, I was warned never to go to the roof again.
Now, first of all, that wasn't by me. That was by another board member.
Agreed.
But not to get all warm and sappy and stuff, but my 20 years here, I've never seen a elementary school principal integrate themselves in the community like you have. So kudos. There's big shoes to fill and I wish you much success. But before you go, I got two questions on the principal's report. Number one, attendance with the remote learning, did we notice a significant drop off from when we started to kind of the last couple of weeks?
We didn't. We didn't necessarily record every minute and every day of who attended when. It was quite a challenge, as you can imagine, just with technology and access for students. Plus their own lives and just what they could tolerate and what they weren't able to. I would say overall, I didn't necessarily, and I can check in with the staff, we'll have our last staff meeting tomorrow morning. There wasn't necessarily that I got a gauge of that there was less attendance. It was more attending still to what was happening, but maybe not necessarily participating in what was what was being attended. You could definitely tell the fatigue was there from students that this was more than they had bargained for, you know, just to have a couple of weeks of it or a couple turning to a couple of months was a lot more than everybody really had respected. And for students to continue to engage in that manner was really challenging.
Cool. And Adam, two, two comments on the principal's report for you. Number one, with regards to snow days next year, I hope one of the lessons that we learned from this is that they can definitely be eliminated at this point. To take a one day of remote learning and allow our one device per child to go home that day and allow for remote learning. I don't think it's too much of a stretch because I think we've kind of learned that skill. That's one of the significant takeaways from this.
Yeah, I think so my my two initial thoughts about that are, yes, I think there will never be a need for us to extend our school year for any reason beyond our initial end of the end of the year. We can just say that this is the end of the school year period. No need to make up these. I do still think there's some community value in our snow days happening. I think there is a real excitement and a genuine break it provides for students and families to have some snow days. And so I think we might need to think about a balancing act about maybe not getting rid of all of them necessarily. So that's a thought I have. But the other thing is we now have, in my mind, we have more flexibility when it comes to unique occurrences. For example, the day after Labor Day this year is the primary election day for the for the state elections. Normally, we would still have school on those days, even though there's people voting during the day. In the COVID-19 crisis, we absolutely will not because that's not going to fly and to have mixing of those pools of people. So no problem, but that'll be a remote day, right? So I think in that case, we can look at remote learning now as as more of a backup for when we feel it's appropriate to not have school in person on given days. So so I'm not sure about snow days. I would contend we need to think about keeping at least some before we start going to remote so that we can still have the joy of the child childhood wonder of a snow day happening. But absolutely agree that we shouldn't extend our school year any longer.
Awesome. And then the next question or comment was, you know, maybe you and Sarah can get together with our new principal and do a community meet and greet via Zoom or some sort of public interaction or interface so people can actually meet our new principal before September starts. It's not like we could do coffee with the the principal at the store or something, but something out of the box for the three of you guys.
Yeah, Sarah, if you want to pick a date, I'm happy to do that. And Kim will be, I think, pretty stoked to do that, too, actually.
Yeah, I'd love to. Any other questions for John on the principal's report?
I like your shirt, John, by the way. I just have to say that.
Thank you. I think we went to the same place.
John, one question that I had is, have you gotten any feedback about the sixth grade graduation plans from parents or students or staff?
So staff, yes, we've started that process. So we're working with sixth grade teachers. We actually met with the students the other day. Have elicited some information from them. I wanted to open up to a full more staff participation tomorrow morning as the staff meeting, but I also wanted to send out a Zoom invite for families. I'd like to do it this week so that we can get together and just kind of plan out or at least gather some ideas of things that they were thinking intentionally for that.
Right. That ceremony would be, where's it planning on being held?
So at this point, we have the date of June 17, which is a Wednesday, and we're looking at the same location at South Heagan that the high school view.
I've already heard some feedback on that. Just as an FYI, like, I think that people are really disappointed that it wouldn't be at the village school. That's what I've heard. So I just wanted to throw that out there in case no one's mentioned it. I've heard it.
I, I, I suspected as such, without kind of, I don't know, gauging my knowledge of the town, that that would be a struggle for some. So I know that when we meet as with the family members, we can talk more about that. I know that for town emergency management, that's also potentially a concern with gathering people onsite. I know it's an essential piece to what the DOE considers for us to be participating, participating on the school site. But again, I know there's some concerns within the town of bringing people together. So I think there might be a way to maneuver, but I'm not necessarily sure where to go yet. So I'll engage from the families and then I can reach out to the town.
Thank you. Jess, did you have something you wanted to add?
I was just going to say sort of what you said, that just as room parents, we had sort of discussed options, given that we weren't sure if we were going to be able to get together. And there was some disappointment expressed that it's not going to be at the village school. And we understand, given the current climate, but you know, and everything that we had talked about had really sort of depended on us being able to get together as a bigger group. And I don't think that's really going to be safe or advisable at this point. So as room parents, we don't really have any input about, you know, with with good ideas for what we can do remotely or socially distant. Unfortunately.
Is is the, is the plan still to use the high school equipment and the chairs and the AV stuff as a test run for the high school graduation? Is that the reason why we're having it there?
I didn't take us as a test run. I thought potentially that that would be a venue similar to what we would have had in the multipurpose room for we've had for standing. Obviously, weather dependent because of potential there. So that was all that I was considering. But again, that's just an option on the table. Okay, we haven't solidified anything. As you heard, I want to talk to families and of course, gather with more staff and get information.
Cool.
Thank you. I know that's kind of a tough one. So thanks in advance for doing the hard work there because I think there's emotions kind of tangled in it and that gets tricky, but we thank you.
Of course. You're welcome.
Anyone have anything else for John before we let him off the hook? For the last time? No? Okay, John, thanks so much. You know, we appreciate.
I do know that. Thank you.
Awesome. Okay, let's see. We are up to our consent agenda. So if there is no objection, I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda items one through four unless there there's discussion. Would anyone like to make a motion to accept it or do we have reason to discuss? Steve?
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda items one through four.
Do I have a second for that motion?
A second.
Yes, thanks so much. Okay. Okay, we'll do a roll call.
Echo, yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Scott?
Same to this, yes.
Jess?
Hankley, yes.
Lawrence, yes. So we have accepted the consent agenda as noted. Thank you. We do have a first reading of policy JLCJ this evening, which is concussions and head injuries. It is one that has been floating around for a while. So I'll ask, is there any, do we have any discussion on it? Or do we feel like we can move for approval this evening? It feels like it's one that's been around the block a time or two, and I know the policy committee really chewed it and did good work on this one, so not seeing any.
Speaking for myself, I'm very comfortable just approving it tonight.
I am, too. So
I am, too.
Okay, so I would then take a motion to accept policy JLCJ as written.
I make that motion to accept policy as written.
Thanks. Second, Jess, thank you. Okay, let's do a roll call. Pete?
Echo, yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Scott?
Same to this, yes.
Jess? We saw you say yes. Thank you, Lawrence.
I was muted.
We got that. Okay, so policy JLCJ is approved. Thank you. We are up to our second public comment time, and unfortunately, Mr. O'Keefe's plea and promise of a fabulous presentation did not get us any public here this evening, so sadly, I will let that go.
I'll get you your T-Rex costume for the next meeting. Maybe that'll be bring people.
Then maybe that'll do it. Maybe that's the maybe that'll be the.
After your face or your expression on the last Zoom capture.
Thanks so much.
Big attractor for views.
You look great. I'm like, awesome, and I'm the cover girl with that. We all know I'm known for my facial expressions, but that was a bit much. Okay, do we have a non-public need? We do. Okay. Any other any other items that the board would like to discuss this evening?
One last thing for me is, what are we going to do for meetings for the summer? Normally, we take July off. Are we going to actually have a July meeting? Is there going to be a need for that? And then August, or are we talking about the meeting for the next time in mid to late August?
Right now, we're on the books for mid to late August, but there might be a need. John, what's? So John's texting me nomination. Did we not do the nominations as part of the consent agenda?
Already closed it out.
Adam, I believe the Amina puts it in the card on Trello, but I it that never goes in the board packet, so it's not listed.
All right, forgive me. So we do have, I still need to do a nomination. We'll pull it up.
And did we have anything specific that we needed to do for the DOE general assurances?
No, it needs to be a part of the meeting, and then in the minutes that way. And Danae, who's listening, will mark it that there's a memo that was there, and that memo will be added to the minutes, and then we should be covered that way.
Okay, because the memo, I mean, we have it in the consent agenda. I just didn't know if we needed to pull it.
I did put a separate motion on that memo, Adam. I'm not sure if we wanted to make that emotion that motion just to make sure it's really clearly captured.
No, when the board when the board makes a consent agenda motion like that, that it involves it adopts all the motions that are included there, which are separate things, right? Like, one thing is to accept a donation, and one thing is to approve minutes. Like, they're doing all of those things at the same time, and that's that's pretty common practice.
Perfect.
Okay, so nominations. We can discuss, and there's five of them, so we can discuss in public, or we can go into non-public and discuss if there's questions. So would you like me to read them? And then if you have any questions, we can go into non-public for those.
Sure.
So, and I will, there's no reason why I don't, I don't think there's any reason why I can't share my screen with this information, so I'll just do that. So five people. Ashley O'Keefe is replacing Valerie Robinson in the guidance counselor position, and you can see her salary, there's savings there of about $7,000. So if you're reading that chart, a positive number is good for us, a negative number is bad for us. Sarah Nickel is our new physical education teacher, and she's got a little bit more experience than our previous person, so she's a little bit more expensive. Lauren Ritchie, school psychologist, which was a new position. You remember that we moved from, it says there's a savings there because it was previously a contracted service, and so we're marking the savings down that we had budget-wise. Lauren is somebody who has been working for us in the Amherst School District for the past couple of years and is moving up the hill to Montverne. It would be inappropriate for me to say she's upgrading to Montverne, so I won't say that. Rebecca Carl is our new music teacher, replacing Julie Sullivan, saves us some money there as well. She's relatively new to teaching, but not new to music, and we're excited about her. And then Kristy Valahira, I think is how you say it, is our new art teacher. So I want to commend John for finding these people. He's done a good job. These are hard positions being part-time to fill, and he's done a good job finding quality people. And I can say that I'm, I feel very good about all three of the phys ed, music, and art position. Lauren Ritchie, a school psychologist, is a rock star. She may also be a former Wyndham person back in the day, and she is very well-known for being top-notch and will be great. And then Ashley is our guidance counselor. John had several applicants for that, and Ashley's an excellent pick. So we had conversations with her about the importance of that position at the Montverne Village School, especially given there's only one administrator and how that role really serves several different jobs within the school. So that's that. Those are our five. So I'd be happy to take, we can go into non-public of his questions if they're about the specific people, if they're about the positions, we can do it here in public. Otherwise, I'll place all five in nomination for you.
Does anyone have questions?
I hate to go into non-public, but I do have questions. I'm sorry, guys.
That's okay. Let's do it.
Okay. So what is the?
Want to set a breakout room?
Yeah, I do a breakout room for us.
And what we need to do a roll call to go into non-public based on RSA?
91A dash. Oh, man, my mind's blank. Three, two, A, and C, I think it is? A and C are the right letters. I'm not sure I've got the right numbers leading up to it.
Okay, so do I have a motion to enter non-public under that RSA? That Danae will, I'm sure, write down for us. She's a rock star.
I'll make that motion to go into non-public.
Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe. Do we have a second? Or Mr. Echo, sorry.
I was gonna say, that was Peter.
Well, I saw you raise your hand first.
No, that's good. I'll second it.
Okay, thanks. So roll call. Pete?
Echo, yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Yes.
Lawrence, yes. Okay, so we will enter non-public, and if Adam, if you can do your magic.
Here we go.
You need to stop the recording, or does it automatically stop?
Public, we're back. Thanks for waiting for us. All right, so I'll place a denomination, those five teachers from before that we mentioned.
Okay, so do we have a motion to accept the five nominations as nominated?
I will.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Great. Adam, do you need us to go through by name or?
Nope, just the minutes will reflect all of the information we have here.
Okay, great. So we have a second on the motion. Pull this up. So let's start with Mr. O'Keefe.
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Lawrence, yes. So that motion passes. Thank you very much.
And I just like to quickly compliment John and everybody involved with the hiring, because, I mean, that's a pretty impressive get from the the upbeat comments that you all had about these candidates that are going to be part of our family up on the hill. And given they're all part-time or or not full-time and whatever, except for the one. So thank you very much for the efforts and the and the interviews and the fact that you all feel really, really strongly about these candidates. That's that's an incredible fill in a short amount of time, so thank you.
You're welcome. Our pleasure. We're just excited to have new team members that are that exciting that we're that excited about to work with.
And John, you know, we certainly appreciate you doing that in the spirit of really keeping that team, even though you're moving on down. Like, it's so appreciated. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the staff would come hunt me down if I didn't, so.
And then one final note, we are accepting a resignation this evening from Melissa Zbkoski, who's not returning in the fall. So John's already got the job.
Saw that coming.
John already has the job posted and will be going through a hiring process for that job.
Okay.
And that's our only remaining opening, I believe.
Correct. We are full up after that one.
Great. Thanks for the hard work on that. And I know Mrs. Z will be missed.
Big time.
She will be.
Go. Let her know that we reluctantly accept her resignation. We understand. Okay, do we have any other items that need to be discussed before we adjourn for the evening?
Do we need to make a motion regarding that policy decision? Or are we just instructing? I'm seeing Adam shake his head no. Okay, great.
Fabulous. All right. Well, I I know I don't need a motion to adjourn, so I will just thank everyone for your attendance and participation. Love seeing all the smiling faces not masked. So it's good to see the smiles, and and thank you all very much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
We will adjourn at 9:25. Thanks, everyone.